February 16, 2016, meeting in the Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to yield for a second. For those of you that do or may or may not have heard, we have two Hartford County Sheriff's deputies that were obviously shot and killed, and I think ought to do respect for them, Mr. Pat Daley and Mark Loggson, if we can have a moment of silence in these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
We gather today here today in the tent of doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to protect with respect for all. May our personal face give us strength to act honestly and well in the manner before us. Thank you. Amen.
Mr. Walker, we have a Boy Scout troop here from your district.
Thank you. We have two individuals here this evening, two Boy Scouts are going to help us lead the pledge tonight. We have Braden Smith from Troop 339 out of Severna Park, and we have Greg Grubach with Boy Scout Troop 783 out of Cape St. Clair. Now Greg lives in my district, and so, and I happened to meet Braden this evening and invited both of them to help us with the pledge. So gentlemen, if you'll come to the mic right over there and lead us off, we'll wait on your cue.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ma'am Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. I do see we have one person signed up for invitation to the audience, Ronnie Tillman. Please come forward, and then anyone else wishing to speak on any item not on the printed agenda, please come forward as well.
My name is Ronnie Tillman. I'm at the 3504 Indian Lane, Edgewater, Maryland. I want to talk about the Mayo Sewer Project. My home is located directly behind the drilling area on the South River. First, I want to thank Jerry Walker. Jerry has given me a lot of information on this and a lot of help. He's been there any time we have called him. Delays. The project was to start October 1st, 2015, did not start until 10/29. Consequently, the contractor had to work six 12-hours a day and 24-hours a day on 12/14 and 12/15. This involved two diesel generators running constantly, drilling rigs running constantly, and water trucks running in and out all day long. Contractor left the site on 12/18, 2015, and as of now, no further work has been done. We were told work would be restarted on March 3rd. Contractor took drill rig to Ocean City stating that he could make more money to be there. Also, the county is going to start fining him after April 1st with the original contract saying March 15th as the completion date. They're going to fine him $1,500 a day. He said that doesn't mean anything to him. All right. The date was 3/15 was moved to April 1st without our knowledge. I'm sorry, I skipped that. Site was left on 12/18. There was a fracal on 12/15, meaning there was a leak into the South River of betonite. Okay? The work was, the cleanup was not completed. There was a mess left on the South River shoreline, which is a living shoreline area on the South River agation to Lock Haven. The site was not properly secured when they left. We had walls falling down each end of the site, and there's a pipe this big, gentlemen, goes across the South River. I had to call the owner of the company to get the site closed up. I couldn't get the Executive's Office to do it. I called three times. I got no response. Who is representing us? I'm done.
Let me just please summarize.
Okay. This project here, let me finish. The project was poorly managed, poorly executed, recording impact on the community. This, roads are still closed down here, and it's still a mess. And as a community, we will be diligent, lawful, and have no compromising. No more extended work hours. The last part of this contract says eight hours a day, five days a week. We will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Thank you.
Okay, guys. Have a good, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Grasso.
I want to hit you with some questions over here. I got, I got just a bunch of pictures over here, and I'm looking for clarification.
Sir, that's a difference.
I got the picture. You want to see it? Okay, so this is your stuff?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
You're together?
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Grasso, this, I don't know if you have this document here. That's Mr. Tillman's testimony.
Okay, got it. Got it. I thought it was going together with the pictures.
Mr. Grasso, I have some pictures of the mess that they left. Reason I called the county, I know I'm on time.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. I think Ms. Trump has got some questions for you.
Either. So you were talking kind of fast, so I want to, I might have missed. Totally fine. I might have missed something, but did you say you contacted the Executive's Office three times and you never heard back?
I called the Public Works person who was in charge down there.
Okay.
I called the county Executive's Office three times before they called me back. Finally, they sent somebody out. By then, I had called the owner of the company. I have his, he's in New Jersey.
Okay.
The next day, the site was straightened out. But there's a pipe this big. I go down there one afternoon, there's a man in there with a kit, and this kid's sitting on the pipe. What's going to happen if he goes in that pipe?
Well, you've done, you've done a good job documenting, I think, this, so I'm sure if Mr. Walker is familiar, and it sounds like he is.
Chris, you're only getting half of it. There's a lot of other things that they've told us that they didn't do. They kept changing. The lady on the site cannot make a decision without Chris Phipps overturning her.
Well, they're coming to my.
And I have proof of that.
They're coming to my side of the river next, so I'm very interested in this.
Well, you're lucky because they're over there closing up Hillsmere when they should have been working on our side of the river. It's a $37 million project, guys. It's being run like a bunch of kids. The contractors are running the job, not the county.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Ma'am, please state your name and address for the record and keep in mind it's two minutes.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Craig. I live at 1836 Shore Drive in Edgewater, and I've passed out some photographs. These are not buildings that are in my immediate neighborhood, but I take a walk every morning, and they're within a 10-minute walk of my neighborhood. What I'd like to point out is that we have a number of vacant blighted buildings on waterfront in Edgewater, and I believe that since I currently work actually in this issue in the city of Annapolis, I should pay attention to it in my own neighborhood. So I'm going to give you a few statistics. First off, a couple of those buildings, one of them you might notice, you can't even tell there's a building underneath it. There's ivy growing all over the building, and that would be that cover photo. There is a building under there. There is a little bungalow house under there. There are four of them. They're all immediately adjacent. I scratched my head about why the adjacent property owners haven't made complaints because obviously one of the properties in your packet is trying to sell its property and divide it into two lots, and has not been able to do so clearly because of the vacant blighted condition of adjacent properties. I don't think that's something that we can feel good about in our community, and I certainly don't. And a couple of things I just want to bring to the forefront. Peeling print, broken windows, crumbling foundations, and collapsing porches contribute negatively to property values. Some of these property values have lost $100,000 when I go through and look at the ESTAD information. I've seen $100,000 of lost value. That's not just those properties. That's revenue to our county. So I'm concerned about the fact that we have such properties in our neighborhood when we all work hard to maintain those properties. They consume vacant properties like that, consume other county services. We spend dollars on code enforcement, inspections, legal actions, public hearings, police and fire services, street closures, boarding up buildings, trying to address public safety in some of those buildings. So one of the things I would close with saying is that I am encouraged, and I'll testify, on the merger of planning and zoning and the building inspections department, because I think that that may be able to help us more quickly get to this issue of vacant blighted properties and help these property owners understand.
Please summarize.
So, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Is there any item any council member would like to place in tonight's agenda? No? May have a motion at the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or amendment constitutes the reading of the whole.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Ma'am Secretary, please read the minutes of February 1st, 2016.
The meeting was called ordered by Chairman Derek Fink at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Fink.
May have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Minutes, February 1st, 2016. Stand and approve as read. Ma'am Secretary, please read the bill, the title, yeah, the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill 1916 Anordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Controls, Severe Weather Animal Alert. Bill 2016 Anordnance Concerning the Odenton Growth Management Area and Plan Review.
Thank you. Please read the title of the resolution to be introduced, or Resolution 316?
Resolution urging the Maryland General Assembly to introduce and support an oversight committee to monitor the Anaronda County Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Ms. Grasso.
The council, I guess, gentlemen, what we pretty much got here is I think it's no, it's no surprise to what's going on, what I believe with the liquor board and the complaints that we're getting from our constituents. The issue that we have here is that there's too much power being put in front of three people. That's the problem. If you look at other jurisdictions, they have five and better number amount of people that are overseeing liquor license. And anytime that you turn around and you have three people in charge of a liquor license, unfortunately, things are happening that shouldn't be happening. And that's the part that's got me worried the most. So we got a couple of choices here, gentlemen. We, we ask the governor to turn around and, or the General Assembly, and ask them to turn around and go from a three-member board to a five-member board, so that there's less chance of unfairness being done. As you can see with the council, we got seven people here. It is highly unlikely that all seven officers are going to be able to do something that's not copesthetic. But it's very likely when you only have two or three people on a liquor board. And based on the complaints that I've got going on, there's a lot of uncopesthetic stuff going on. So the immediate issue, and I've passed it on to Senator Simonair, was to hopefully get everyone on the same page and call for the governor's office or the General Assembly to have an oversight commission. So if we have three members and they don't want to raise it from three to five, then let there be a committee that oversees exactly what they're doing. It doesn't matter what party's in there. If the council remembers clearly, a few years back, I put legislation in calling for term limits on the Board of Appeals. We all know why we voted for term limits on the Board of Appeals, because there was things that shouldn't have been going on on the Board of Appeals. And the problem with our liquor board is that there isn't any term limits on the liquor board. I've also called for legislation to put two four-year terms on the liquor board, so that there is some unsavory activity going on, that these people will be automatically flushed out and new people to come in. But as long as we're sitting with a three-member board on this liquor board, we're setting ourselves up for trouble, gentlemen. We really are. So I'm asking the council to stand with me on this here, and until the General Assembly acts to either take this from a three-member to a five-member, let the General Assembly put together a commission to oversee that the liquor board, that what they're doing is savory to the rest of the people of Anaronda County. And that's pretty much what I'm asking for.
Mr. Fink. I got a question for the sponsor. I know we did a lot of these oversight committees for the school board, and it was just like window dressing, you know? You want action. And I think that's what you want to get at, and that's my concern here. I guess my question is, you know, I read the audit that we got, and our auditor looks at the, and that was the first vote, you remember, to take away, things were there. But I'm just wondering, what else will this do besides them actually making change? I mean, certainly the fiscal matters, the other things, but is the oversight committee going to have anything with finance? I'm just curious on what it will, what's the intention?
Well, my intention was, is just, the basic thing is, like you said exactly, it's window dressing. If we don't do anything, we're going to continue to have the same what we got going on, some unsavory activity. That's what's going on. So we take a stand and we scream loud as the county council, because if you remember, gentlemen, unanimously, all seven of us pulled the money out of that budget, because we know something's going on. We all know something's going on. And it doesn't matter what party they're from, because there's Republicans and Democrats on that, on that thing. They're treating the people unfairly. And I just think it's our responsibility to say something to the General Assembly, you need to have a committee. And Mr. Pruski is right. It just could just be window dressing. Well, then, if you, if you want to turn around and you want to put a resolution together that urges the General Assembly to go from a three-member council to a five-member council, I'm all for that, too. What I'm not for is maintaining status quo what we got right now. I went and spoke before the General Assembly. Mr. Walker was there and heard it. The issue that's really got me upset more than anything is the bill that one of the senators has going in, and even though it might be in good intentions, I don't think it's a good bill, because if the same individuals that are on the liquor board today remain in there, then what you're going to have is no transparency going on. The senator's calling for a $90,000 a year fixed salary on an attorney. Okay? So my problem is, is why would we spend $90,000 to put an attorney for the liquor board? That's the first problem you got to ask yourself. What if they only have one thing to talk about? We're going to pay that person $90,000 a year just to talk about one thing. And the second thing that happens here, you have no oversight on that attorney. So you can, you can talk to council on the liquor board, they'll turn around and argue, well, I said Nancy Dugan has come before the council plenty of times, and she has said to all of us that the liquor, the liquor board's business could be handled by the office of law. And the reason why it should be handled by the office of law, because there's a boatload of attorneys that oversee what's going on. So by going with the senator's bill, he wants to turn around, and first of all, what he wants to do is he wants to take the budget away from Anaronda County. So now, none of us get to see what's going on. So that means none of us would have turned around and be able to remove that money from the liquor board, because we knew something was going wrong. There's no oversight. Let's take, let's take it and let's move it, so nobody keeps their eyes on it. Next thing to do, let's put an attorney in there that's not going to watch what's going on. And gentlemen, I mean, call it an apple what an apple is, okay? There's corruption going on all day long there. It's just too much circumstantial evidence to, I've spent three hours going around from liquor store to liquor store and seeing where people live and seeing what realty companies involve with the people on this board. Just too much. They call it a coincidence, way too much. So, you know, the senator's bill, I think, is a great idea, providing that you, we have fresh people to come in there, that if there is unsavory activity going on, they're purged by a two-four-year terms. But if we turn around and we just take that, let him, allow them to take that budget and move it away from our sites, we're not seeing what's going on. Their argument is, as long as they are making money, what concern of it is with the county council. So let's think about this. They turn around and they make a million dollars, okay, and they only spend $999,000. That's a great deal as far as they're concerned, because that didn't cost us nothing. They made us some money. My point is, why should we settle for that kind of statement? We should be maximizing what that liquor board says to go back to the people of Anaronda County, to fund other type of deals. That's my problem. So, you know, you gentlemen, do as you do as you please, but I mean, you've heard me say, my thing is, I'd like a five-member panel. Mr. Pruski made a very good point, this is a window dressing, but it's a public statement that the council was aware of what's going on. And we're, we're asking the General Assembly to do something about it. And they can just as well kick it down the road. Because if this senator's bill passes, it's going to be out of our hands. They're going to get their $90,000 a year attorney with a $10,000 contractual attorney. No one's going to see anything, and this nonsense will continue. I mean, think about this logically, and you can't get around this one. In the one case that I've been pulled up from as far as the ethics situation, the council, the contractual council for the liquor board took a $1,200 check from the plaintiff. So what you got here is you got the plaintiff saying, I want the license. You got the liquor board and the council saying, no, you're not getting your license. And the attorney right here that is representing the liquor board physically took payment from the plaintiff. Now, how in the world can you turn around and represent the protestors and the liquor board and still turn around and take money from the plaintiff? I call that conflict of interest all day long. In fact, I called that attorney, and I said to that person, I'm going to give you three weeks to return that money back to that man. Just that simple. She responded to, I guess, the counsel of the man and said that, you know, they would turn around and they would, she would mail the money back. He has yet received the money, and of course, the bar association has been notified about this. All right? And she's trying to claim that she had a verbal agreement with his counsel, that they shared costs, and according to him, he said there was no agreement whatsoever. She physically took the money from him. And we would like to call this profit sharing. Okay? Profit sharing. Because what this man turned around and did is he had to take the actual audio from the liquor, liquor board, and transcribe it from an audio to an actual written, written documents to go into the circuit court. Okay? He paid a licensed company to do that. And the liquor board wasn't happy. So what they do, they turn around and they hand it to their attorney and says, see if everything's correct here. And mysteriously, their attorney has better ears than the licensed company and come up with things that supposedly is not in there. To me, that just looked like a way for that attorney to make 1,200 bucks is what it looked like to me. That attorney made 200 bucks an hour. Mr. Walker is well aware of that, that attorney who we're talking about. We all are, without me saying the person's name. But this person worked six hours, and she mysteriously found things that the licensed company that he paid in the transcript never found. How does that work? 1,200 bucks, free money, directly from him. This person also, okay, was asked for a federal tax ID number, has not given it. The person was also asked for a bill to what work he had done, hasn't given it. That's what you're looking at. That's what worries me. How this attorney got away with all this is exactly what will happen with that $90,000 attorney that none of us will see. So again, I didn't mean to go off the trail here, gentlemen, but the point of the matter is, we got to do something. That's it.
There was a trail there?
I think he made his own.
Well, like I said, Mr. Walker has the, has the luxury of knowing a lot of what's going on, because he's had same issues with his constituents, so he knows more so. But I was just trying to give you guys like a speed course on, real quick, on what's going on.
That was real quick.
Yeah, that's the short version. It's a lot longer. Trust me. Mr. Smith.
And this is primarily for the sponsor. Have you had conversations with the delegation or the senators to actually ask for that specific amendment or issue to be raised at their level?
Yes. I talked to Seth Howard, was one of the ones I talked to. I talked to Senator Simonair, and what they were doing is using that, the one item that we were pushing for was the, I don't remember if our resolution, if the resolution came across the council yet for the urging a two-four-year terms for the liquor board. I don't remember us voting on that one. But I told them, Seth Howard said to me, can you put together a resolution that says the council will support a committee over top of the three-member liquor board? And I said, sure, I'll put it in front of them. I mean, heck, we all voted to take away the money from the liquor board, because we felt some unsavory things going on, and it seems kind of crazy if we don't. It's not costing us anything. Let's put it that way. And what it's doing is it's sending a clear message to the General Assembly that three-member board isn't working. Okay? You got to do something better about this. And you got to remember this, that again, you're going to have a governor that's in there, and these gentlemen, their time is up in March of 2017. So in theory, the governor can turn around and pull everybody out, and then the senior Republican senators would put, hopefully, three people in. That doesn't mean they're not going to do the same thing that's going on right now. It's a bad system of a three-man liquor board, period, with no oversight. It's a bad system. It's got nothing to do with party here. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chair. I'm assuming?
One second. Ms. Smith.
And so have they even started to draft up any legislation within the delegation that addresses liquor board issues, or are you just planning on just running for a state seat here?
That, too. That, too, by the way, just so you know. That, too. No, what happened was, we went to the General Assembly, Mr. Walker and I was there, and the senator turned around and proposed three changes to this liquor board. So the Nick Kipke, Simonair, and the rest of them wanted some ammunition, because they want to put amendments in to kind of head this bill off. And that's really what this is about. Now, whether they get the votes or not, that's, that's another story, but, you know, it's not costing us anything, and we all stuck together, all seven of us, feeling that there was something wrong there, and we all took the money out. And I would think that we would do anything in our power to try to make sure that this liquor board system is right like it should be. And I think it's truthfully, folks, I think it's hurting our people. Bottom line.
Ms. Trump. Thanks, Chair. So during my time here, Mr. Grasso, you probably agree, I mean, we haven't, we haven't done this a lot. We haven't weighed in on telling the delegation what we want. And this, I mean, this seems like a pretty strange ask, that we want them to do an oversight committee, which we don't know what they will do, who will be on it. And there will be some costs, because someone's got to staff this committee if they exist, right? I mean, so that's another thing. But I don't know, if this was, if this was my big thing that I was worried about, I would do what you, the things you were suggesting. I'd go talk to a senator and get them to introduce a bill for term limits or for something like that. I mean, personally, I mean, this, this is, I guess, a public way to show support for something, but the something just doesn't make sense to me. Like, I don't understand how a limited-duration oversight committee is going to affect the changes that you said you really wanted. I mean, if, if it was for term limits, I'm all for term limits on the liquor board. You know, if it was something like that, I think that the vehicle that is, that is going to be, there's going to be a bill over across the street, they're going to do something. I don't think it's going to be an oversight committee. And personally, I think that a 10-minute Grasso tirade does more to elevate the issue than, than this. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm hesitant, I'm more reluctant to do things like this, because I think when the council does weigh in, it should be more by consensus about a big issue. This, to me, feels like something we want to change and tweak, but I'm just a little reluctant to, you know, to have the council.
Well, here's what happens, Trump, is one of, one of the issues here is, as you said, a limited board, okay? The problem is, is that, and I believe myself, and I'm sure most of us on this council don't feel confident behind the gentlemen that are running the liquor board now. So at least right now, this, this pretty much puts everybody on notice that there could be a committee that can watch what they are doing, okay, until their term limits come up in March of 2017. This is something. Okay? The General Assembly can turn around and do nothing with it, but we, as the council, did a responsible move and said, hey, we're asking for a committee. If you don't want to fund it, and you don't want to do it, that's on you. But at least the constituents of Anaronda County spoke out through us to say, we tried to do something about this liquor board. So that's what I'm saying. They might not fund it. They might not spend any money. They might not do anything, but it's saying we want something.
And I understand, and, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say in closing, I mean, I guess my difference here is I'd prefer to do it as an individual advocacy thing, where I would call up my senator or my delegates, and I would explain where I was coming from, rather than a weigh-in from the council.
Well, here's what, let me just end off on this part. When the liquor board came before the delegation on Friday, Delegate McMillan, okay, he looked right over at the liquor board, and he said to the council, he says, we all agree, everybody agrees that something's going on with this liquor board, and the part that's got me more than anything, he says, you got a unanimous vote from the council taking money out of your budget. Now, that's a pretty strong statement, don't you think? And that's what he said. So, my point of the matter is, is anytime we come in together as a group, as a unanimous vote, it makes a very clear statement. Now, what they do with it is another story. Now, that was McMillan that made that comment, so you do as you please, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Grasso.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Grasso, do you know if there's any other liquor boards that are, I know that there's different systems in different counties. Are there any other liquor boards that have an oversight committee like this set up?
I'm not aware of any, to be honest with you, I'm not. I just thought that, I thought it would be easier than trying to get the General Assembly to probably go from a three-member to a five-member, is probably gonna be a bigger fight than to turn around and come back and we say, okay, our council, we wants an oversight committee if you're not willing to do that as a minimum. Seems like an easier fight than going with a five-member count. I mean, I'd just as well be happy if we all, if we put a resolution in, and if you guys wanted to tank this one, and we were all in consent and say, we want a five-member liquor board, I'll be more than happy to sponsor that, and any co-sponsors, I'll take it. If you guys want to tank this, I'm fine with that. Then let's all together say we want a five-member liquor board. And that takes the chance of unsavory activity happening with a three-member spread on a five-member, and how do you guys feel about it? You know, if you want to do that, I'm fine with that. You want to go, go with a resolution on a five-member, I'm cool. No hard feelings. Tell me.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with the five-member. I've got no problem with that, and I also have no problem supporting something, saying that there's term limits. I agree with you 100%.
You've already supported that.
I'm sorry?
We did a resolution.
There was a resolution passed last year for term limits for the liquor board. It was already over with the General Assembly.
Okay, we did do that, right?
Have they done anything with that? Mr. Grasso, do you know if they're pursuing it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm, Simonair is the one, I think I had the office, I told them, was it, was it you, Amy, I told him to send over to Simonair?
Yes, Mr. Grasso, I was.
Okay.
And I did, and they have it. I'm not sure what the status of legislation is, though, at this point, because that was, I only heard back.
Okay. Yeah, they wanted it to Simonair, so I know he was gonna use it, because he asked me to email it to him.
Is the idea with this, because the other question I have on it is, is if we do stuff like this, usually it's in support of a specific bill that's already, it's already created and dropped and is being heard or whatever. Is, is, you said Delegate Howard, I think, is it his intention to have something in the General Assembly during this session?
Yeah, I don't know if it was actually billed per se, I'm pretty sure that he wanted to put an amendment in, okay, to the senators' bills, there was three bills.
To create.
Yeah, an amendment to do that, and to give his argument for why his amendment is strong. So, he was looking for this to file an amendment to knock down that bill. I don't know them actually sending in a specific bill that says for term limits, and that could very well be, I haven't talked to the other senator about it. He might have very well did that, but, you know.
Did he give you any specifics of what the, how this oversight panel would be set up, or no? He didn't?
No. He just told me, give me something to go throw an amendment in and fight it with. And I said, okay. I said, well, I will put, I will put it in for the, and that was Seth, Seth Howard. He told me, he said, put it in, and I said, I'll put it in for the guys, you know, that's what we can do.
Yeah, Mr. Trumpauer, in defense of Mr. Grasso's 10-minute tirade, actually, at the General Assembly delegation meeting, I thought he did a fantastic job.
Thanks, man.
He was very articulate and knew the issue very well, and spoke, actually, very, it was mild-mannered, Grasso.
I was mellow, wasn't I?
You were, man, you were. I was impressed.
Thanks, man, I appreciate that.
Why does that surprise you, Mr. Walker? Because that's, as you well know, it's abnormal.
Thanks, man, I appreciate that.
No problem.
So, Mr. Walker, do you want to hold this resolution, bring back a resolution asking for a five-member?
I'm gonna ask you guys, how do you feel about it? I mean, do you just want to go with a five-member resolution, and we'll tank this?
It seems like that's what you want, you know.
Okay, so let's do that, then. We'll pull this resolution, and we'll put one up for a five-member resolution.
So, you are withdrawing Resolution 316?
It's your man. Can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
We don't get a chance to talk to each other as a group, but it's gotta be in front of everybody, so I'm pretending that these people aren't even here. I'm talking about you guys right now, if you're fine with that, I'm okay with that, because I want us to come together as a team.
So, here's, here's what I'm, I still want us to be careful on, so you have a body, you have an elected body across the street who's put in office, just as we are, who are charged with making decisions and how they govern, or how this state is governed, just like we are with this county, and I just, I mean, I just, I still want us to be sensitive and careful on how we use our vehicle and our platform at the county level, because sometimes these things can become politicized, and I don't want us to sort of leverage the body of this council to just purely make political statements. If we're making changes that affect things that we know for a fact, or irregularities or legal issues that have been breached, or that's documented, and we can cite that, but I don't, I just want us to be careful on how we use this body to address issues that are just rumor-based, or we believe, or somebody said this, or somebody did this. That's my only sort of two cents when it comes to, because I wouldn't question legislators at the state level, because, like me, I mean, I'm assuming that they operate with integrity, and that they're doing what they think is in the best interest of their districts, and so that's my premise, and I just want to unfairly judge them as a body, because we believe something may be happening when there is really no legal documentations, or somebody was arrested, or something like that, to actually point that out as an issue. Are there flags that have probably come up with this particular topic? Certainly. But I just, I want us to be careful on how we just sort of throw mud at the other branch of government, when there really is no factual, factually-based arguments that we're using to justify it. So, that's kind of where I'm at on this issue, because I certainly wouldn't want the delegation sort of telling me how to run Anaronda County. I would not sort of levy on them how they should run the state, and so that's kind of where I'm at on this whole issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruka.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of thoughts that I'd like to share. First of all, just for my clarification, may I, is it my understanding that the Board of License Commissioners is a creature of the state, and our only really control is a budgetary one? That's, so, the reason that we're, this is in the form of a resolution, is because, other than a budgetary, we pay their bills, so we have a budgetary control, but that's all the only control we have. So, that's why this is in the form of a resolution, and we want to do something, we want to express our concern. So, I'm, I would, just because you've asked us the question, I would tell you that, for my part, I think I would be in favor of term limits, but I think the council's already expressed that, or, we've already expressed that. If, in fact...
Mr. Pruski? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Pruski, may I just ask you a question? The one thing that I guess you mentioned, in the audit that was done at the state level, they even, they tried to say that basically we didn't have the right to make the changes into the budget, so they feel like we overstepped, and I don't know, again, because it's like a, you know, state.
Pseudo-state.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. Like a pseudo-state. So, I don't even know, like...
If it's even, if we even have that much control? Okay, thank you.
Their argument is that we don't.
We may have less control.
Less control than we think. So, again, but that was just preliminary to saying that that's why we need to do this in this form of a resolution and express a concern. And I would, so, with respect to either term limits or five members, I think I would be, if you're asking for our thoughts on that, I'm giving you that. Yeah, I think I would. My other concern about this particular thing, and I don't mean to be piling on it, and I apologize not for bringing this, for not bringing this up sooner, but in one of the warehouse clauses here, we talk about the board has become entrenched, leading to ethics violations and inconsistent enforcement, and I worry a little bit that this touches into the area of Bill of Attainer, which is a legislative finding of guilt. Really, we don't have the ability to find guilt, because that's another branch of government that does that. So, the wording of this worries me a little that way, but, again, that's, I apologize for not having noticed that sooner and brought it up sooner, but I wanted to express it. Thank you.
Mr. Grasso, are you withdrawing this?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw Bill 316.
So, we're gonna withdraw 316. Madam Secretary, can you please read the title of Resolution 416?
Resolution recognizes the need to reorganize the Office of Planning and Zoning and Department of Inspections and Permits.
Mr. Marzick, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the county executive's office. This resolution recognizes our proposed changes to the land use departments that have come forward from both the Sultis land use study, as well as recommendations from the county executive transition teams from approximately 14, 15 months ago. We are reorganizing these departments and plan to do that through the upcoming budget, but we wanted to be transparent with the council. Many of all have seen the information that's come out recently. We provided the copy of the Sultis study to the council several, or at least a couple months ago, and our plans are to move the engineering to inspection and permits. We'll be working alongside, the inspectors, excuse me, the engineers will be working alongside the inspectors, and then also to move the zoning enforcement to zoning, and we think there'll be some synergy realized there as well. We have Dan Kane from inspection and permits, and Larry Tom from planning and zoning, if the council has any specific questions about these moves within these departments.
Mr. Marzick, one second. There's no additional cost, I'm guessing, because you're just moving pens from one side to the other?
Correct.
And I'm also assuming that, Mr. Tom, Mr. Kane, you guys support these moves?
Yes, sir.
Indeed.
All right. Mr. Smith?
And just for the record, so, from a programmatic standpoint, when you come down in May with the budget, you're still gonna be budgeting for those pieces, even though they may reside in IMP and vice versa. So, nothing is changing on a programmatic standpoint, just from an operational standpoint, because the only thing that's sort of taking place, correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Trumpauer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. First, I mean, is, trying to think how to phrase this, but, so, IMP is getting some people from OPZ, OPZ is getting some people from IMP. Is it about a wash? I mean, is it like 10 and 10?
Not quite.
Or...
The engineering group currently is 11 staff.
Okay.
The zoning enforcement group is currently eight.
So, you have a net loss of three?
That's correct.
Okay, you're, it's okay, right? I mean, it's fine. The job's still gonna get done.
Right.
Okay. And the second question is, by passing this resolution, I mean, it appears to me that we're not necessarily endorsing the specifics, we're certainly not endorsing the position control or anything like that, we're just generally saying, hey, we recognize, you guys are gonna shuffle some people around, we expect to see the details in the budget. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. Seems fine to me. Thanks. It says that we support legislation that would create... Yeah, yeah, an oversight committee on this, too. We're gonna do oversight committees on everything. Office of Law, IMP, P&amp;Z.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to follow up. For anyone whose position would be impacted, that's a part of a bargaining unit, have you met with those units? And I'm sure there's been concerns about this, anytime you shift offices, but has those units been informed through HR? Has there been any changes? And I know the federal government has KSAs, but, you know, whatever you have for your knowledge and ability in terms of their qualifications, because certainly I don't want to come budget time and say, oh, I lost my job because we decided to move another department, we rewrote your job, and there was no discussion. I just want to be very clear about what we're trying to do here.
Well, I can tell you that both Mr. Kane and I met directly with the staff that would be affected by these changes. There are no changes in the job description, no changes in their status, and, you know, it literally is just moving these people from one location to another.
If I may, speaking directly to the bargaining, there's one person that's in a representative position that will be moving to planning and zoning. The union president of that same bargaining unit is part of zoning enforcement, so to say they've been informed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Fink.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Somebody stole my first one, which was the number of people in each area that are being flip-flopped.
Sorry, buddy.
That's all right. I forgot who stole it. Mr. Fink asked a question at the beginning about cost, and you said there was no additional cost. So, when we see the budget in May, will there be any additional positions related to this switch that we'll see created that are not currently part of the swap?
There's, I mean, there's no additional positions whatsoever, just switching units.
Right.
But May 1st, we won't see any in the budget?
No.
Okay.
Unless you're offering.
That's not my, that's not my area of expertise. When were, have they already moved?
No.
They haven't moved, so they're still in your respective areas.
That's correct.
Why was this in the form of a resolution and not an ordinance? Can somebody answer that maybe for me, Mr. Marzick, maybe?
Sure, we had discussed coming down with an ordinance, but timing-wise, it just wasn't going to work out, it wasn't really worth bringing down an ordinance that would then also require budget amendments as far as the timing with the end of the fiscal year. So, we thought it would be best to just come down and make these changes cleanly through the upcoming budget, and have the resolution come down as kind of saying, this is what we're doing. We had several questions come out when the announcements were made, and we wanted to make clear that this is what our intent was.
So, it's just more of an informational thing? I mean, we all kind of saw the press release, and so it was just informational on top of what we've already sent out?
Right, trying to get buy-in from the council, let them know exactly what we're doing.
So, I'm looking at the executive order, number 82, and it says, by April 1st, number one is, by April 1st, 2016, all engineer reviewers shall be assigned from the Office of Planning and Zoning to the Department of Inspections and Permits. And then number two says, by April 1st, 2016, all zoning enforcement inspectors shall be assigned, reassigned from the Department of Inspections and Permits to the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, while they haven't been switched yet, it sounds like from the executive order that they're getting ready to be by April 1st. Is that accurate?
I don't know the exact date, but our goal was to try to move them as quickly as we could. I don't have the EO in front of me, but I'll take you at the dates on.
Yeah, it's what it says right here.
Yeah, it does say April 1st. I think in the, in the paragraph above that, it says, we'll use best efforts to do it by then, and I don't honestly remember if the EO was drafted before or after we had, my office had the discussion with the administration, that moving the positions permanently would require both position control and budget adjustment bills, and then, at one point, we were talking about doing those now to try and get it done by April 1st, and then it was decided, as Mr. Marzick said, that it would be cleaner, because we looked at the timing, and by the time it became effective, it would be like 30 days before a budget bill anyway, so it was decided that the budget adjustment and position control would be addressed in the FY '17 budget bill, as opposed to separate ordinances in the fourth quarter.
So, what's in the executive order really should be changed, is what you're saying?
Well, I think because the paragraph above that that says, we'll use best efforts, or something along those lines, I don't have it right in front of me either, that it really doesn't need to be changed, because it's still the intention of the administration that these changes be made, and the purpose of the resolution was to make that transparent and let everybody know, especially the employees that, you know, would have been hearing rumors and whatnot.
So, even though this says April 1st, they won't be moved until after the budget is passed?
The position control and budget adjustment can't be effective until, so they won't move departments until July 1st. It would be effective July, assuming that you pass it in the budget, it couldn't be effective until July 1st.
And will they be in any form acting in those areas between now and July 1st? I mean, are things operationally already working, like as if the changes have been made?
Well, no, they're not switching jobs, so they will be acting in the same job that they've always had. The engineers are doing engineering and are still sitting on Larry's floor and haven't moved down to Dan's floor yet, and vice versa. So, nobody's changing job requirements, and like July 1st, there would be no change in their job duties.
But they would move.
They're just gonna be, they're gonna be in different units.
They're moved, though, right?
Yes, they would, I assume.
But I mean, I guess organizationally, though, I guess is my, not necessarily physically moving, but organizationally, is the change that's being proposed already in effect?
No.
No.
So, they're not reporting over to, your people aren't reporting to him, yet his people aren't reporting to you?
That's correct. Yeah, my office made it clear that couldn't happen until July 1st, assuming you pass it in the budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No other questions?
Thank you. Anyone wishing, any other questions? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution 416? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Lisa Craig, 1836 Shore Drive. I would like to support this resolution and support the county council's efforts to move this reorganization forward. I would make one request, and I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the independent study that was completed, but as is with any good piece of legislation, it would be valuable to understand what the benchmarks are to demonstrate success for the reorganization effort, because I will tell you, my own experience, and Councilman Walker understands, when I had challenges working through the process and getting a simple deck constructed on the rear of my house, it took 11 months, and it was primarily because communication was not happening between four different staff people within these two agencies. And the story was being told in different ways, depending on myself, my husband, my contractor, or my contractor's wife, who used to work with the county many years ago, was having a discussion. So, I guess the point would be that it's good to have the right people working in the right agencies. It's even more important to know that they're coordinating and communicating in such a way to make it efficient and transparent to those of us who come in requesting a permit and trying to understand why it is that we're spending 11 months getting a permit for a project that took 11 days to complete. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's unbelievable. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 416? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 416.
Resolution recognizes the need to reorganize the Office of Planning and Zoning and Department of Inspections and Permits.[1683.12] the Office of Planning and Zoning and Department of Inspections and Permits.
Any other discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Mr. Perk?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 416 is passed.
Thank you. I do want to make the announcement that Bill 216 was withdrawn. Should have made that earlier. I'd also like to recognize former Councilman Jamie Vanoyt, sitting in the back. And now, I'd like to, I guess, honor a longtime county employee, someone that has put in countless hours working for this county, specifically this county council, and many other county councils, and wishing her a farewell and on to a new sector of life. I don't think you're officially retiring, game over, just moving on to something. I'm sorry?
I get three days.
You get three days a week?
No, I get three days to be retired.
So, you start back up?
Monday.
Next Monday. Good for you. Well, you're certainly going to be missed on the county level, especially in these chambers, especially in May. And we've got some really cool stuff for you here. One of the privileges of being chairman is I get to be able to deliver these. And I've noticed that our resolutions are a heck of a lot bigger than the resolutions we give everyone else. I think that must mean you're special. But on behalf of the entire county council, I want to present this citation to Teresa Sutherland, "When the occasion honoring your retirement, in recognition of your dedicated public service to the council and the citizens of Anarundo County over the past 28-plus years, starting in the auditor's office in July of 1987..." Do you want to know what I was doing in 1987?
I was going to say, were you born then?
Do you want to know what I was doing in 1987? I know Pete's not laughing.
We were doing the same thing.
Office in July 1987, becoming the county auditor on July 1st, 1995. You want to know what I was doing in 1995?
No.
I wasn't in high school yet. "The county council is grateful for your hard work and dedication. Our congratulations and best wishes for a well-deserved, happy, and rewarding three-day retirement." We've, congratulations, we've got a really nice Jefferson cup for you as well.
Thank you.
And then, on behalf of the Maryland Senate, there's a citation here also, and it reads, "Official citation, be hereby known to all that the sincerest congratulations are offered to Teresa Sutherland, in recognition of her retirement after 28 years of service to Anarundo County. I commend and thank you for your years of dedication and service presented on the 12th day of February 2016, signed by former councilman and current Senator Ed DeGrange." And I know I speak for all of us and all the men and women that have served in these positions, that you're truly going to be missed here in the county council. You've got a lot of institutional knowledge, your work ethic's been fantastic, and I know it's going to be a tough job finding your replacement, and we just can't thank you enough, Teresa, for everything you've done for us and all the past councils and county employees.
Thank you. Thank you. And a special thanks to my guys, my staff.
Well done.
They're why I'm a good auditor, right there. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Actually, I think Mr. Walker was probably lending to it. I certainly wanted to say something, and I'm grateful for your leadership. I mean, it's interesting, you know, we gave you our signature on that certificate, but I think the best thing we gave you was taking your advice and listening to it, because that is what saved Anarundo County, and that's what's kept us in the situation we've been in. Well, we have good financial footings. A lot of that is clearly owed to you, and I'm just grateful that I had the opportunity to serve with you over the last three years, and to sort of learn from you and take your advice. And I hope that you won't be too far away, because you're certainly on speed dial. And I do want to congratulate Ms. Jody for stepping up to try to tackle the big shoes that you've sort of put there for her to fill. So, I'm just grateful that, you know, I had that opportunity to sit with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker?
So, before I got on the county council, and I decided I wanted to run, I called Teresa up at the advice of a former council member and asked to go out to lunch with her, just to kind of pick her brain, to understand a little bit more about the budget. And I don't know if you'll remember this or not, but she said to me at the lunch, she said, "Are you sure you really want to do this?" She's like, "Right now, we're running a structural deficit, money's not coming in, the economy's in recession." She's like, "I just don't think this is really a great time." She actually tried to talk me out of running. But, no, it didn't work. No, thankfully, it didn't. And I just want to say, along with the rest of my colleagues, that you really will be missed, Teresa. I know, you know, nobody really probably understands or knows the number of hours, the number of hours and the years off of your life from all of the stress that we go through when we go through the budget process. If anybody's driven by Teresa's office window late at night during the budget season, quite often, those lights were still on, working, and not just her, but all of her staff as well. And I know that she constantly appreciates them and has attributed a lot of her success and things that she's passed along to us, to the great folks she has working with her. But she's given countless hours, and when that happens, it's hours away from your life personally, your family, your children. And we appreciate it. I know I do. And just want to say thank you for all that you've given to this council, many councils before us, and most importantly, to the citizens of Anarundo County. You will be terribly missed, and there are huge shoes to fill, Mr. Smith, they really are. And while I know you'll be on my speed dial, I'm not sure if you'll pick up, but we do thank you very much for all of the dedication, hard work, and contributions you've made to the citizens and to saving the taxpayers' dollars throughout your years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Trumpauer?
Thank you. I will continue to heap the praise on, similar to Mr. Walker, I first met Madam Auditor when I was a candidate, and I thought I knew a lot about the county budget. And then, someone suggested, "If you really want to know about the county budget, you should go meet with Teresa Sutherland." And so, similar to Mr. Walker, I took a meeting with Teresa, but I was cheaper than you, so I didn't buy her lunch, I just met her in the office. But that was about five and a half, six years ago, and that was the start of my education. And it has progressed throughout the last five and a half years, where pretty much every council meeting, I would learn something. And I'll tell you guys all a secret about being on the council. If you occupy this seat next to the auditor, you're about 30% smarter at any given time, because you get that institutional knowledge. So, I'll just end by saying that we certainly all owe you a debt of gratitude, Madam Auditor. But I would also say that every taxpayer in Anarundo County owes you a huge debt of gratitude. It would be a very interesting graduate thesis for someone to try and figure out how many tens of millions of dollars you have saved the county over the course of your career, but it's probably very substantial. So, thank you, and please do stay in touch.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.